As we do a salary survey, we go about that's how we establish our salaries. We don't just make it up and say, well, we want somebody to make 100 bucks an hour or 50 bucks an hour. We just, we go out and we find things that are similar. We look at costs. We try to figure out to be, because you've got to be competitive in the marketplace to get the people that you kind of want. And, you know, you just have to take all those things into consideration. So this isn't just one individual, the HR guy or me making up a number. That's where we start. And again, that's why the commissioners have every opportunity to say, I am not going to pay that much money. That's fine. We can go with a different number. It just depends upon what your competitiveness will be out in the marketplace, whether you'll get the people that you want with the skills that you want. So that's where we begin. That's what we work on. And, and I will say also, a human services director is going to do a lot more than Nikki's doing. Nikki right now is just handling that. She's not a public guardian. And that's going to be a whole lot more for them to do, even when we have a second person on full time. They're going to be sharing that duty because somebody's got to take some time off every once in a while and not be have to be available 24/7. So again, this is kind of a learning process. We're going to take baby steps. We're going to get through it. And, and I, and I just trust us that we'll get this done. And I feel very confident about it. As far as the DA's office, I talk to Mike all the time. We'll work through this. It's not a big deal. And we'll figure out what we need to do and what's the right thing. And, and we'll make adjustments as we go. So.
And I agree completely, commissioners. I work with, with the county manager. I work with the clerk's office. You know, as questions come up from different offices and, and departments, we address them. And so I, my, we will address this.
All right. I appreciate all that. Commissioner French, I, and this boils down to, for me, at the beginning of this question, I mean, this was, this actually, this actually came up, at least in my time on this board. We, we did have a public administrator at one time in this, in this county. We did elect one. And we had, he was in the basement of this courthouse, his office. And we, in fact, we had several that I was aware of, but that didn't work out very well. That, we, we found that out a long time ago. That just simply didn't work out. And so, and then when we had a hard time getting, filling those positions, when those positions vacated, but from an appointment standpoint, it ended up falling back, as per NRS statute, back on the district attorney's office. And we've kind of just been rolling along for years, expecting the DA to handle that, to deal, to deal with that. Same thing was with, with, when Anita Paquette was, had the, the position, human service, human services position, so to speak. And she was in that little, little office over there at the, at the jail, with boxes of canned goods stacked up all around her office. It was an opportunity on her part, and as the way she saw it, was, it was a, it allowed her to fill a need that she could see in the community. At the same time, there are the duties that our county clerk was actually handling, out of her office, having to do with indigent services and whatnot, was, she wouldn't say it an awful lot either. But what it boiled down to was ignorance, ignorance was bliss on the part of this board, of all of the moving parts that were going on out there on the ground, and many of them that weren't actually dealing with the issues on the ground day to day. They were, they were kind of, they're kind of keeping the, keeping the lid on it, but it wasn't an ideal circumstance. So then we hire Nikki Lynn when Anita retires, and Nikki walks into the office. We give her her own little place over here and say, do good things for our community. And it's oh my God moment. There was lots and lots happening that she wasn't aware of at the time. There was a lot of things that we transfer, a lot of the services back and forth. And here we are again. And we, I have to agree. I think she was working out of class. No question about it. It certainly was at times, for sure. And we were expecting her to do it, and she wasn't saying an awful lot. But the bottom line was, is now, we're having looked at all of this history behind it and whatnot, we're, she's retiring, and we're now looking at trying to fill the holes even further. And this, we're hiring a half time position, and we're recognizing the fact, just I, we've got a little taste of that today from Shannon. But we recognize what we have in front of us. We're not that far away from Churchill County, as far as numbers go, and as far as, as far as, there's nothing unique about their, their community versus ours, other than the fact they, they don't have as many volunteer organizations. But they still have the services, the requirement for services in Churchill County. And we're not that far away from them. So here we are again, having the conversation about, so how do we, how do we incrementally move this forward to where we anticipating what us being able to fill those gaps? And I believe that the difference between $83,000 and $58,000 isn't that much. And that's what the base salary differences are. We're asking that, that director to actually put a program together. We're not asking her to do what Nikki did. We're asking her to do that too, for them. But we're going to ask them to put a department together. We're going to ask them to incorporate a big chunk of what the district attorney has been doing into that department. And we're actually going to try to create a, an entity which provides a little bit better opportunity for the county to provide for those services. So yes, it's going to cost us more money. It's going to cost more money. And what it boils down to is that, that first initial conversation we had, is it something we want to do? Is something that we not necessarily want to do it? Is it something we have to do? And so, you know, what it boils down to, based on the last two votes from the, from the county, from the, this commission, is we want, we want to hire a, we want to put a department together that's going to meet those needs and not necessarily, certainly not necessarily with the Churchill County model at this time, but certainly allow us to do a little bit better job without working somebody 24/7. And at the same time, we're asking that person to put a program together and actually not only evaluate what the job that's getting done and actually provide those services, but we're going to ask them to go out there and hustle up a whole bunch of grants, just like they did in Churchill County. You know, we, if you want to expand your program, go out and get some grants. It's like basically what we're going to say to them. And so the bottom line is, is that we, you get what you pay for. And, and I think the difference between $83,000 and $58,000 is, is, in the, in the grand scheme of what we're going to be asking that person to do is, is minimal, based on what we're going to ask. So we've, we've actually improved the salary range. It was based on data that was collected in other counties and whatnot, and it, in order to remain competitive, and actually put somebody into the job that might stay there a while. And I think ultimately what we were trying to do today is determine what our, what a human services director and, and a position's going to look like. And that was why we had Shannon come up, come and present to us. Sure gives me a flavor of what it's going to look like 10 years down the road, and likely. And what our challenges are going to be as a commission. So that's my two cents, or four cents, whatever you want.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay. I'm not excited that we're having, that we're going to be creating another department and that we have to hire another person and we have to pay them more. But at the same time, I mean, if you look at where we are now, I think it's our doing that, I don't want to speak for Nikki, but I, you know, she had to be on call 24/7 and middle of the night, any time of the day. She had to be ready to be, she was a one man show, and she had to be ready to go. I wonder that had we given her a little help, some assistance, if she wouldn't still be working for us. I don't know that.
I wondered the same thing.
And I don't want, I think if we continue down that path and just fill Nikki's position, we're going to burn another person out in a year or two, and we're going to be right back here. The main reason I, and then, and then it goes back to the discussion where we were at last year's retreat, where we've got a DA, and we've got a number of lawyers in that office, taking people to the grocery store, picking up prescriptions, rather than, you know, their, their time is worth way too much to be doing that type of stuff. It just, I mean, writing is on the wall to me that, that we've got to, you know, the, where we were 10, 20 years ago is not the same as it is today. The legislature, the federal government has made, has made the requirements of what we have to provide for indigent services more expensive for us. That just did. They didn't have to do these things 20 years ago that we have to do today. So it takes more time. It's going to take more help. And so I don't really see another way. Am I happy that we have to do it? No. But I think it's, it's forced upon us to do this. And so I'm good with it. I think.
Mr. Chair, Nikki Lynn is on the line, would like to make a comment. Are you ready for that?
You bet.
Nikki?
Go ahead, Nikki.
Hi. Thank you so much. Positive comments. This is Nikki Lynn, the current human services coordinator. Absolutely right. We started on this road back in 2018 to increase my position to a director, and that never did move off the DA's desk until now. And just FYI, Abel said that the salary was so much greater because it includes the public guardian. Actually, by bringing in the public guardian with the director, the salary goes down. So as a human services director, period, the salary range would have been higher. And I do appreciate all the comments. And by all means, I would not even be considering resigning if things had moved forward back then. So that's Nikki Lynn's comments. Thank you very much for your support.
Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki.
I could hardly hear her, but did she say, had things moved forward, we wouldn't be having this conversation? Is that what I got?
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that there was tremendous interest on her part back in the day, you know, and maybe, maybe, just maybe we can reinterest her. I don't know. But at this point in time, she's got plans, so we need to move on.
Right.
Yeah. At any rate, I think, I think for today, you know, from a, from a retreat perspective, I, I think the idea was to get an idea of what a, you know, what a human services director is going to look like in terms of what their, their duties are going to be, and what a program is likely going to, how it's going to evolve in a small county like ours. And so I think we've done that. And I think it's been, it's been a great conversation and whatnot. I, I agree with, with Commissioner Cherry that I'm not happy about spending any more money either. I just, it's, I, I don't really like being placed in a corner and actually being told you're going to have to spend money that you don't have. I never have liked that. But it's, that's, that's the reality we're living in at this stage. And I, you know, the, that was the whole idea behind the direction I took the IAF board with the state to try to get that money brought back to the counties for some assistance with these programs, knowing that, that through the changes to the, the health insurance changes through our counties and whatnot, that we were going to have a huge, through Medicaid, we're going to have a huge match that's going to come back to the county, which it did. And so I think it's on us to utilize those funds that have been, that we raise and we provide now back to us to be able to create as robust a program that we can to meet those needs. And not, and, you know, because basically, we've, we've been, ignorance has been bliss. We've been sitting in a corner thinking this whole thing's taking care of itself, and it hasn't been. So.
I have a comment. This is Commissioner Hill. I agree with Dave. You know, sometimes trying to get the perfect, pretty package is, is impossible. Sometimes you just have to go out and put your tools down and get to work and see how it works out. Couple of concerns I have as a commissioner is, you know, you'll build it and they will come. Are we going to make this so nice and easy that we're going to enable some folks that would possibly be able to enable themselves? You know, are we making things too nice and neat? You know, I like to see people doing things for themselves. But I also want to make sure that we are taking care of the right people that actually need the services and that we, we can provide them at 100%. That's a concern. You know, another concern is we've been approving positions in the DA's office and Tammy's office for, under the excuse that, that they needed the extra help for all these extra services that they provide. You know, what's the give back to the county when we do approve this, or if we do approve this? You know, are we going to see some of those positions return or some of that?
Well, that's a good point, Commissioner, if I may. The district attorney was actually approved for an administrative.
Yep. And I was going to get to that. And, and, you know, the, the DA did, you know, actually not fill a position anticipating this, this move. You know, I, I have the concerns just like anybody else. I, I'm really concerned that there are 35 people over there in Churchill County taking care of the same amount of folks that, that we potentially are. So, you know, I, I understand she is moving into a lot of other services, but, you know, that's something, reality that we need to look at. How, how big of an animal are we going to create here?
I think the take home message to me, I got the same sticker shock you did.
Yeah.
And, but the take home message to me was an answer to the question, how much, how, how big of, of an increase in draw on the, on the general fund to Churchill County since, since you started to where you're at now?
Yeah.
And that was, that was a $64 question, and nothing. It's been, it has, it has been self-generated in terms of a grant cycle. And those people are being hired as a grant, you know, under a grant cycle and whatnot. And I, I'm of the opinion, if, if grant dollars are out there and we can provide services, I'm not saying we should give, give away the farm, so to speak. Don't get me there at all. But I, but if we can provide services that, everything from mental health services all the way down to services that keep people out of our jails and our emergency rooms, and we can do it with tax dollars that some other city's going to, is going to, going to use, then that's what we should, I think, in my view, shame on us if we don't take a run at that. I'm not saying we build programs because the money's there. I'm saying build programs where you need them and try to fund, and, and build programs around funding that is generated in a much larger tax base. And there's a lot of counties that are just really awesome at it. And we're getting better. We're getting a whole lot better than we are, we were. But.
Yeah. The other point I wanted to make was that, you know, I would like to see some clear and concise roles of, of, of the person, you know, as the deputy had brought up, or as the district attorney, I'm sorry, had brought up earlier, you know, what is exactly the cutoff and, and what's the roles? Seems to be there is some confusion there, but I would assume that you guys can work through that. It sounded like that can be worked through. And by voting today, I don't think we're going to, we're not setting that in stone. I think that's something we can work through. And I, I want to make sure that, I guess, we have your, as you, as you talked about earlier, you know, I think you would have our blessing to move forward.
Yeah, I think, like I said, between, between ordinance and, and any modifications to the job description, I think we, we are dialing those things in.
Yeah.
As, as you guys are giving us that direction. So we, we will accomplish that.
With that, and then I guess the last point is, you know, this is going to get as big as we let it. You know, this isn't the last decision we're going to make. There's going to be several other decisions. This board, rather BS, or the next bunch along the way, before it gets to that 35, it's not going to be the last thing. So.
Oh, absolutely.
I, I think we need to start somewhere. And like Dave had stated, it's not a perfect package, but what is? You know, it's never a perfect package, but we've got to start somewhere. So that's all I have.
May I offer a comment?
Go ahead.
Just in response to Commissioner Hill's query. I apologize if I've ever made the inference that the duties handled by my office are significantly impacted by the position, my position as county welfare director. I've been very blessed to have Nikki and prior to that Anita. They are 24 hours. Rarely do we handle the duties of that office, other than assisting with budgets, at least in recent years. At one time, they'd go on vacation. They'd be coming into our office. We'd be doing the hotel rooms, the gas vouchers. But it became a concern security wise particularly. And luckily, those individuals have stepped up and handled those duties. With that being said, I, my office does handle the district courts. I have two people that are in court virtually every single day of the week. Jessica is my elections person. And as you're aware, elections are a huge issue in our current environment. And we are coming up on the midterms, as well as a presidential election in two years. We also handle the business licenses, which we've just done a huge conversion on in, as Andy referred to earlier. And we manage all of those. We also handle marriage licenses, fictitious firm names. There's many duties, including my job as clerk to this board, and all the other boards associated with it. So while I would very much like to say that I'll reduce staffing based on that, on this change, I don't believe that's possible. We are just now getting to the point where we're getting our heads above water. And I'm hopeful. I know my minutes are a huge issue with everybody, but I'm working on them. I can honestly say I have not taken a vacation day in probably four years. So I certainly don't want any inference that we may be reducing staffing, say with the upcoming budget hearings. If that's the board's choice to direct me to do that, obviously I will do so, but it will not be based on a request from me during that process. Thanks.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't have a lot to say that hasn't already been stated. But I just, I wanted to make sure that after, after the way this, this part of our meeting started out, and the way Abel presented it, and our district attorney jumped in, that I'm clear that we will be looking for a human services director, and then that we will have a public guarding, guardian and a public administrator that would be filled by one person, and then there would be another half person?
The half person is actually what we originally requested, and I don't know how it got converted to a half time. It would be a full, full time position.
So we'd be looking at three full time?
No, we're looking at one director and one full time.
Okay, so we have the human services director, and then the public guardian and public administrator would answer to the human services director?
Yes, sir.
Am I correct on that? And the human services director then would have to do the job of public administrator and public guardian from time to time as well?
Yes. So the, the deputy position would ultimately be responsible for those day to day with the oversight of the human services director and the support of the district attorney's office. Am I correct, Mike?
Yeah, I, I see the deputy, well, the director will be responsible for that office and, and all of its employees. And, and what is being presented, has been presented to you is currently it'll be that director and one employee. And the, between, that office will, will serve the function of the social or human services, as well as public guardian, public administrator. I, within that office, that office will address those, those duties as, as they come up or staffing's required. And, and I think one clarification is, is that second position, I don't see it as, as necessarily just a deputy public guardian. It is actually a deputy human services worker.
Yes, I agree.
And, and so whatever functions are necessary of that office, whether it's indigent services to assist the, the boss, or just like we have deputy clerks or deputy treasurer, deputy, you know, or, or these other functions, I, I, that's how I see that.
That, that was why I brought that question up. In other words, the second person would be, I mean, the director of human services would be much like you sitting here today because your deputy usually fulfills that role, not able to today. So here you are. That's what I want.
Yeah, the, the office is responsible, correct. And collectively, those duties will be addressed by that office. Correct.
The other comment probably doesn't have directed at this that I got out of our presentation by Shannon. Yeah, I was flabbergasted when we got, every year that those numbers went up. But the other thing that hit me was county, Churchill County's 26,000, but the people live at the base, which is quite large, they aren't included in that number. So Churchill County is way bigger than Humboldt County, probably close to Elko County.
Closer, I would say, yeah. No doubt. Yeah, I just want to go back to Mr. Chair, Dave Mendiola, is just mentioned, like you said here, I've seen that that way all along, the way that Mike described it, exactly. So that, both individuals will have to cross train. They'll both be available to do everything. But the director will have the additional responsibility of building the strategic plan, finding and planning where we need to change and adjust and grow in the, in the future, if necessary. And so they'll be the, the guidance responsible for budgeting. But both individuals are going to have to be involved in everything because if one gets sick or has to go on, or wants to go on vacation or something, the other one's got to take full responsibility and, and be able to do all of it. And like I said, Nikki's been doing pretty much all of it. And so that's, well, except for the public guardian stuff, of course, of course. But yeah, so I see it exactly that way. It's kind of like we talk about all the time when we're talking about succession planning. You know, we, we try to do that here in Humboldt County, like that was why the HR director, assistant county guy came up, was out of, Commissioner Cherry was the one who really came up with the idea. And so that if something happened to me, we got somebody who can step in and take over. And yeah, would it hurt the other duties? Of course. But eventually, if I'm gone for good, you bring somebody else in, right? So, and we try to do that in every department and/or in every elected officials area. But that's, it's difficult to do in a small county. So we've been really good at hybridizing things. And we found ways to use people from different departments to supplement our workloads. And we've been very successful at it. And we've kept our budgets, you know, lower than they could be if you tried to put a backup in every, in every department. That's pretty much impossible. So, but anyway, having said that, like I said, I do see it's two people, full time, both cross trained to be able to handle anything that might come up at any point in time.
From a direction perspective, you know, like what we have in front of us today and the, on, for possible action, you know, it's my understanding, and the first time I read this, I was kind of confused by that. I, I think ultimately what we said last time is we approved the executive director, or the, the human services director's position. And, and we held off on, with regard to the part time position because we felt that the human services position needed to be a part of that recruitment and a part of that hiring process. And at the same time, we made the conversation that around this being a new department, is, is going to be upon them to actually structure this thing, put it together and bring that in front of us. So from a standpoint of today, as far as us actually coming up with a, a specific structure, how we want this to happen, I, I think we've fleshed out the issue with regard to the DA and the guardianship position and administrative position. And I think we've, we're headed down the road from a standpoint of, of hiring the, the position, getting it in place. And then actually we go from there and start tapping the brakes, so to speak, as, as Commissioner Hill talked about, in terms of what this thing looks like as we're, as we're, as the director comes to us with, with the programming. That's how I see it.
So do we, do we actually need something else?
You know, I, I don't know that there needs to be an action. I put it there. So in case we came up with something, I think the example would be that Mike brought up, we will have to have some ordinance changes. So I think it would be a good motion to just direct the DA and the county manager's office and HR to work towards those ordinance changes and potential job description changes. But again, I also think that we really need to get that director on board to help with that and to be a part of that. So that's not going to happen before we get him on. But I think, I think that would be a good motion to have us work toward getting an ordinance amendments and potential job description changes.
Mr. Chair, I would agree with, with that proposed recommendation as far as a motion. And, and I'll take it a step further. I, I agree that the, this department head should be involved in, in. I, I, I agree that the, this department head should be involved in, in further tweaking of the ordinance and job descriptions and the like. And, and as I think it's been indicated at, at least the last couple of regular meetings, that I see this being somewhat regular discussion, you know, periodically or, you know, once every year or twice a year or quarterly or as things come up, just to make sure that people have the proper authority or we're, we're complying with the, the wishes or directions that this board is, is giving. The, the only other thing, and I don't, I, I don't know that it's been made or how clear it's been made, that this would be a, a, a department that is under the supervision of the county manager's office, like, like other departments that are not, that do not contain an elected official or an office. And, and that, that is what, at least in, in my mind, and wanted to make that clear, that, 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 I think somewhere we saw an organizational chart.
Yes, and it was also part of the, the description there, the reporting structure for the position.
Yeah.
So you're right, Mike.
And just wanted to clarify or confirm that, that as far as the structure, that, that is what is being contemplated there.
Okay, so you guys good with a motion to, a directive motion for the administrator, county manager, working with the DA to actually structure the relationship having to do with the transfer responsibilities? Is that, is that kind of where you were going with that?
Or the ordinance, I believe.
Work on the ordinance.
Yeah.
Updating the ordinance.
Updating the ordinance.
Yeah, I, I just wrote down motion to direct the county manager, district attorney and HR director to work on amendments to the Humboldt County code and job descriptions to finalize the structure of the human services department.
Yeah. Somebody'd like to have that motion.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion on the floor. Discussion on the motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
So Mr. Chair, do you want to take a break here for a second, grab some lunch? And then we can grab, get Robin in here and start talking about mosquitoes?
Yeah.
Either while we're working through lunch or just give us 15 minutes, maybe?
Yeah, probably ought to do that.
See that. Oh, yeah.
Dave is, sorry.
I didn't type all that.
Let's call this meeting back to order. We're going to go to item nine, which is mosquito black fly program update. County manager Dave Mindiola will provide an update on the search for an alternative solution to provide mosquito black fly abatement in Humboldt County and the city of Winemucca. Robin Gray, as owner of Seven Valleys LLC, has been the point person for this effort up and down the Humboldt River for over 20 years and will be retiring at the conclusion of the 2022 mosquito black fly season. The county and the city have been researching options to replace those services. So Robin, if you wouldn't mind coming on up.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Dave Mindiola, County Manager. So as you know, Robin came to me, it's been four or five months ago now, and announced that this would be her final season and she was moving on some other projects and things that she wants to do. And so we began talking about some different possibilities of what might happen. And I guess, you know, in my, excuse me, in my staff report, I outlined three different potential ideas that we're kind of playing with. In a perfect world, in my mind, would be to get somebody with Robin's background, you know, skill sets, maybe even have done this kind of work elsewhere in some other municipality. And then we could just, they could have their own business, like Seven Valleys. That would be perfect. They could just slide right in. Now, the difference is, is that individual, you know, may not do it exactly like Robin does. That's the whole reason why we wanted to do it sooner rather than later, to get them on board so that they could work with Robin and her group to see how she's done it and how she's, in my mind, perfected that here for Humboldt County. And so that's one of the options. That's our first choice. The other option would be to look at, well, not necessarily in this order, to form a, what I call a weed district, for lack of a better name. But for example, again, Churchill County has a mosquito vector weed district. It's kind of all combined into one. And of course, with that, they have, they outlined a district, you know, what, where the district is, just like we do for all of our general improvement districts. And then you assess those property owners a certain amount every year that goes towards mosquito and black fly abatement. Along with that comes election of a board. And then, of course, that board would need to hire a director, and at least in my mind, a director, which would then sort of be the Robin position. And then they would, again, in a nice case, they would just use Robin's personnel that she already has on staff that uses them as seasonal workers. So that's another way. The problem with that one, in my opinion, is that we have struggled mightily in this county with all of the different GIDs that we have. We have a hard time keeping board members, and it's just a difficult process. Not to say it couldn't work, it could. I don't think there's any doubt about it. I think with the larger population here in the Winemucca area, certainly you could find, you know, enough board members to do that. But there are many processes, ordinances, that you have to go through to get that done. And then last but not least, another one that neither the city or the county want to go there, and that would be to hire somebody as another county employee to do the same work. And then even in that scenario, for example, they could use the staff that Robin has, at least in the near future. I don't know what that looks like in terms of their interest long term, but at least for the first year or two, we probably would have that group available to us. So that would make it, again, pretty smooth sailing. But again, the problem we have with, when we bring them inside the county, it's another position, you know, and benefits come with that, et cetera, et cetera. So where we are today is Alicia and I have been working together, and Alicia's done a bit of research, and we have identified a lot of different places around the country that do fly and insect abatement, mosquito abatement. And Robin had suggested that to me in the past, that there's a lot of people that do that, and there's, you know, we certainly should have an opportunity to find somebody. So we did reach out. We're in the process of putting together a request for proposal, and we're going to put out a bid here probably in the next two or three weeks or so, when we get that finalized. And that's something that we want to run by Robin to make sure that we've kind of covered it. And so the goal of that is to see what kind of interest and see whether or not we, you know, those people are out there that could be interested in coming to Humboldt County. And that, again, would be as a third-party vendor, that would be as a business coming in here, much like Seven Valleys. And that's what that is intended to do, to find out the interest, find out what's out there in the terms of skill sets. And based on that response, we're going to know whether or not, hey, maybe we can do it the way we'd like to do it, or that might be a little more difficult. So it'll give us at least a start. And so that's kind of where we're at. I did reach out to Jeff Shrimp right after Robin and I had talked, and we had several discussions, and I don't think he ever reached out to you, did he? I think he said he didn't. But he came back to me on January 3rd or 4th, or whatever it was, and just said, I'm just really not interested. I don't think we can handle it. I don't think I can find, I'm having a hard time finding people to, you know, employees right now for what we already do. And so he pulled his name out of the hat. There was also a thought that we might reach out to pest control companies to see if they do anything like that anywhere in any of these, you know, cities, counties. And that might be another one. But I would think that if they are, they would respond to an RFP that we're talking about putting out. So that's kind of where we are. Again, Robin, it's great to have her here. You may want to just comment on and tell them kind of the story that you told me about your concerns as to just getting anybody to do it type.
Yeah, I really think it's important to find somebody who has been involved in mosquito and black abatement. It might be harder, it would be harder to find somebody who's done black fly abatement. It's not nearly as common. I'm doubtful that a pest control company is going to be able to do this job. It's really a totally different sort of a thing. A pest control company basically, you know, a homeowner calls them in to control a particular problem, and it's kind of a cookbook type of thing. You can't do that with mosquitoes. You have to go out and find all the breeding areas and keep track of all the populations that are developing and know what species are there and keep on top of it and use the appropriate measures at the right time. Otherwise, things just blow up, get out of control. It involves, you know, if you've got a normal water here, here where the river either floods naturally or they're irrigating, suddenly you've got like thousands of acres of land that are producing mosquitoes. So you've got to use airplanes. It's beyond, you can't do it from the ground, you've got to use airplanes. There's problems involved in that, both in larva sighting and the adult sighting. Lots of times, you don't get very good results. You have to, you have to know the, especially for adult sighting, you have to know the right conditions and the right times of the day to go after them. There's a lot of involvement there. That's why I say you need, really need somebody who has been involved in mosquito abatement and not, not a pest control company that are doing, you know, getting rid of cockroaches or termites or ants or something like that. It's just a totally different scene. There are companies out there, as far as I know, they're all out of state, that talk, that they put themselves out as doing mosquito abatement, but when you look at their programs, they're mostly about adult sighting. And the fact of the matter is that if you're just going after the adults on something like around Winemucca, you're going to have a public problem before they ever get on the scene. And the other problem with that is that sometimes you've got to wait for a while to get the right kind of weather conditions to have an effective adult spray. And if somebody's 300 miles away, Idaho or California or somewhere like that, that just may not be part of their agenda. They're going to come in and hit it when it's, you know, works for them. And the end result may be that you're not getting any control at all. Early on, when I was starting out here, there was a guy over in Utah that came, would come by and spray, but it was always done on his schedule. And a lot of the times when he did it, you go out the next day and there's still a big mosquito problem. I had to, remember, we had to spray in Battle Mountain once three times to eventually get control. So people don't, they don't understand why you're waiting to bring an airplane in to control adults. Well, the reason is that if you don't spray them at the right time of the day, if you don't spray them under atmospheric conditions that are conducive to getting these minute droplets into contact with flying mosquitoes, you're not going to get any control. You're going to spend $30,000 and still have a problem. You know, so you really want to have a crew on the ground that's doing larval control. You want to be able to come in and reduce the larval populations as much as possible. If you're, if you've got a big area and you've got to do larval control by airplane, it can work really good early in the season, but when things leaf out and the grass grows really tall, it becomes really problematic. Another thing is that as the season goes on, you get a succession of species. When there's irrigation or flooding, there's a group of several species of mosquitoes around here that they're basically, they develop in floodwater. The eggs are, the eggs are laid on the ground, they remain dormant until they get flooded. And so they generally come out pretty much all at once for each flooding. But after that, different kinds of mosquitoes start coming in, and they don't cause as much of a public problem. Why, I don't know, because they do bite people. But the dominant one is the vector for West Nile virus. And to be honest, I've had trouble getting, you know, purchase orders to spray these mosquitoes, you know, in the summer because there isn't anybody calling up and complaining. Instead, you've got this enormous population out there, which could cause some problems in terms of disease. So we use mosquito fish against those particular species, and they do a really good job, if you can get them established, to practically clear them out. Still are going to have to do some round larva sighting. This is another thing that whoever comes in, you're going to want to keep the This is another thing that whoever comes in, you're going to want to keep the mosquito fish hatchery going. So you have that resource. Because once you put them in and they start multiplying, then a lot of these areas, you don't have to treat again. You just kind of monitor and make sure nothing is happening. If you don't have them, then you're going to have to apply BTI there probably every 10 days. Some of it can be by ground, but some of it is still going to end up in by airplane. It's, it's a lot more expensive than, than keeping the fish going. So that's another part of the program. And whoever comes in is going to have to take over that. And that, the pond and, and the hot spring are the county leased. So, you know, I don't know how you want to handle that, but I don't think you want to just get rid of it. You know, you, you want to keep it going. I do think there are people in the mosquito abatement industry that, that would agree, that would come here, you know, if the situation was right for them. You know, I, I started out here just doing black fly abatement for Winnebago and then gradually build up more and more stuff until, you know, I, during the, the season, I'm working seven days a week all the way through. With, with just Humboldt County and Winnebago, those are basically part-time type of jobs. So that's, that is going to be a consideration in somebody coming here. You know, so it's more up to you to figure out how to do that. But that could be kind of a significant problem in getting someone. When there only, you know, there is work to do during the winter and whoever's directing it's going to have to do it. You know, you have to write a report to the state every winter about what you did during the year, what pesticides you used, how much, where, the location, GPS location of every single site that you treated. You know, it's not that hard, but it's a very nitpicking sort of thing. It takes a while. Somebody's going to have to do that. You're going to have to write a report to Department of Wildlife to keep getting permit to use the fish. Up to this time, both Winnebago and Humboldt County have wanted a report from me on what's happened during the year. That's not that hard to really do, but somebody will have to do it. They're going to have to maintain some kind of licensing. It's going to be different depending on what kind of arrangement they have. And they're going to have to go to various online or in-person courses to get their continuing ed units every year. That's part of it, costs money. So there's a lot of things. And myself, I, I always went to at least one mosquito conference a year to sort of keep up on things. And there's a black fly conference that goes on, the North American Black Fly Association. I always went to their meetings. And I think that's important. I don't often see people from Nevada at these meetings. I don't really know why, but for me, I always made a point of going to at least one of them. You know, see, kind of keep up with what other people are doing, their different approaches, different materials that are starting to come online that you could try, that, that might have some advantage. I think they do have value. And you're meeting people and you can, you can talk about your program and, and their program and their experience. And, you know, it helps educate you and keep you up to date instead of becoming this little isolated island where you don't talk to anyone. So those are some of the things I, I think about. I think that somebody who's done it, not only are they familiar with the basic principles and basic ideas behind things, chances are that they have some ability to identify mosquitoes, which is necessary because when you're looking at adults or larvae, that gives you a big idea of what the problems are that are developing, if you know the species, and how best to go after them. If you don't know that, there's, you're going to start running into problems right away. There's going to be some big disasters. So the person has to know something. Probably they aren't going to be familiar with all the species we got here, but they need to be able to sit down on a scope and, and look at them and identify them through I don't think that someone just off the street is going to be able to do that without a lot of painful experience in which they may not even stick around once they get traumatized by things. I'm just telling you the truth. You know, as long as no mosquitoes around, they're all, everybody's saying, oh, it must have been an easy year, nothing around. You get one bite and suddenly they're your worst enemy. Come up to you in the street or in the supermarket and start screaming at you, that's part of the, the thing too. Or they, they don't even know what a mosquito really is. I mean, I've had people think that the cotton coming off of poplar trees are mosquitoes. And they're furious at me, say, look at all this, do your job. You know, you've got to be able to deal with that. It's really annoying, but it's, it's part of the picture.
Yeah.
So I think, you know, that you've got to find somebody who's done this before and kind of knows what territory is like.
Yeah. Yeah, I think historical perspective is important. And I guess two questions I have for you, Robin, is you haven't, is it your intent to stay around in the 2022 season enough to impart some of your baseline knowledge to?
Yeah, my, my intent is, is to kind of break in whoever comes.
Yeah, okay.
You know, take them around to these different sites. And, and they can go with my employees as well on these treatments. Do the fish, do all this stuff so they, they become familiar with it. And, and I will be there so that, you know, and on top of it enough so that, so that, you know, I can catch some shortcoming if it, if it's there. But, you know, even a person who's done mosquito abatement, when you move to a new area, you've got to become familiar with all the, the breeding sites and the ins and outs and the species and, and kind of the way the season moves on through and stuff like that. As a learning, a learning process, even for somebody who has done it before somewhere else.
Yeah. All right. How many employees do you have employed right now?
I've got two, I've got two more that, one more that has been employed and another one that was employed earlier, they want to work this year. So that means four. You know, last year was pretty easy because it's so dry. All the, the stuff, there was no irrigation. So everything was small sites. We did it all from the ground. We only had to fog denio twice. The other towns that we do, we never, the mosquito numbers never got big enough to justify doing any fogging. The sewage treatment plant out on Jungle Road is developing as a mosquito source. After 2020, when we had that, that big migration from, of floodwater mosquitoes from upstream, they laid a lot of eggs out in that sewage plant. And, and so now the population's developing. We had to, we had to fog out there half a dozen times this last year. That's going to probably continue to get, get worse. And it is, the old plant, when I started here, there are these just enormous populations of mosquitoes. You know, and we tried a lot of different things. Larvicide, didn't help, larvicide was kind of difficult, number one. Nobody likes to wade through sewage. That's what we had to do. There's all kinds of stuff down there. I got a big hat pin went through my boot once into my foot and I had to get a lot of shots for that. The other thing is that vegetation gets pretty thick, so it's hard getting granules And there's so much organic material in the water, it kind of absorbs the BTIs, you get bad kills and you end up having to fog the place anyway. So we just dropped the, the larvicide. We kept a trap out there and when, whenever we got up to the threshold numbers, we'd just go out there and fog the place. We just keep doing it and keep the numbers down.
So in, in a perfect world, which doesn't exist, but in, in a, in this, with this circumstance, if, when, when would be advantageous from your perspective for the county to, to provide replacement, a replacement for you to be working with?
Well, the mosquito, mosquito season starts in March. And larvae can appear, start appearing anytime in March. You've got to, as far as the black flies go, you've got to treat the river before the end of March. There's one species that is developing there. And if you don't catch them before the end of March, there's going to be a big emergence. They're very annoying. And once they're adults, you're pretty much stuck with them. So March is the time that work has to begin. And that's mainly for Winnebago. You can kind of, you could, you can get by in the county until the middle of April. That's because we got an adult program. That's when we start sampling for adults. And, you know, then you, then you really need somebody to start learning about the different sites that we sample, what mosquitoes are coming up, how many, and when to start fogging these places.
Okay. May I have any questions?
Comment more than a question. I, I'd like to thank Robin for all the years you've put in. And I was never mad at you. I was there before you started doing it and I can remember black flies coming off that river in front of this door, just looked like clouds, rain clouds coming by. And after you started, we didn't have that anymore. Once in a while, we might get, see a little bit in between treatments, but it was, it was great. Thank you for that. And I, I think she's given us the information that we need to get on it, get some, some company or somebody in place to work on this.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hold that down. So, Robin, how, how long is, like, your season? You said it starts March?
Starts in March. And usually by the beginning of October, it's pretty much over. There's been, there's been a few times we've had to do stuff in, in October, but that's, that's rare.
Then you've got to do your paperwork and stuff.
Paperwork, yeah.
So six months?
Well, the, the actual season will go like seven months.
Seven months. Okay. What, what are the requirements on the, are you state licensed, federally licensed?
I've got a pest control operator license with the state. You've got to keep, keep that up, renew it every year. And the employees who are, who are going to go out and treat, do treatments unsupervised, they've got to have that too. And to get it, you've got to take a test with the state and pass it. But you can take it over again if you flunk.
There's what, there's 24 hours of instruction and then there's a certification exam, yeah.
Well, there's, there's like a book you study. When you feel like you're ready, you make an appointment, go and take the exam. Like these two other guys that have worked for me and, and planning to work this year, they're both studying the, the book. Cause they want, because if they get it, then I boost their wages by four bucks an hour. So, you know, there's some incentive to get it.
So, you know, thinking about a full-time employee, you said it's about seven months. Is it five days a week most times?
Well, the way I, way I did it, when I, when I had here in Lander County, I mean, I was working seven days a week, that whole seven months. And the people were working for me. Sometimes they, they worked enough that, you know, particularly in, you know, May through July, they're getting quite a bit of overtime. Then it would drop down below. But with just Humboldt and Winnebago, kind of depends on the year. If you had a really wet year, you might get 40 hours a week, but, and, but that wouldn't last for the whole, the whole season. May through July, that's really the peak time. That's when the big hours come in. After, after the end of July and August, things start declining. So that's another, that's another problem for hiring somebody is that this is, as it stands with just Humboldt and Winnebago, it's not a full-time job and it's a seasonal job, even though, yeah, I do have paperwork to do in the winter. It's, it's not taking up all my time.
Yeah, that's why a contract makes more sense. From the, your, the mosquito fish propagation project that you've got, what kind of, what kind of hours and work do you put into that to maintain the population of fish in the pond even when you're not transferring fish out of there?
Well, okay, we, we grind up fish food and once a week, somebody goes out there, usually on Mondays. We, we do it every week because what happened in the past is these people that, hot tubbers have a couple of times cut the water off to the pond so they can redirect it into their hot tub. We almost lost it. So now, every week, usually Monday, one of us goes out there, makes sure that water's flowing into the pond, feeds the fish. And we check out things like, right now, there's a leak that we've got to fix. It's coming out the bank. So we got to fix that. That happened before and we fixed it. Now it's developing again. So, you know, and we, in the spring, we first put tumbleweeds in the pond to develop a bigger protozoan population for these fish to eat. And then we add some cow manure to kind of fertilize it, get it going. And usually sometime in the summer, the vegetation gets pretty thick. We have to clean it out. So there's these very maintenance, these various maintenance tasks that have to be carried out.
How many, approximately, I know you can't count them, but approximately, how many brood stock do you carry over from season to season?
You know, does it, I mean, we, we took out something like almost 90,000 last year. And there was no noticeable diminution of the population. and there was no noticeable diminution of the population. I really haven't got any idea. We started, we used to have a pond in Pumpernickel, and then they didn't want us there anymore, so we dug this pond up there in Paradise, and we transferred 5,000 fish out of the Pumpernickel Pond out to Paradise, and that, you know, they, they multiply. And, you know, when you, when you move them to various marshes and stuff out along the river, providing that you don't have big fish in there, they start multiplying. About a month after you put them in, you start, start seeing the fish, and, and then they just really boom, and that's the end of the mosquito population there, until the place dries up.
I was just curious about how many, from the county's perspective, make sure, as part of that program, that we have that propagation program and maintain it in place, because you remember, it's not, you don't just call somebody up or, or go to amazon.com and find Gambuzia for...
No.
You know, they, they're, they're hard to come by, and, and harder yet to have in numbers that you need when you need them. So, I, I think it's important for us to maintain that.
Yeah, we, the, the numbers have stayed up a lot better since we've been feeding them. You know, even though the pond usually doesn't freeze over, I mean, we did have a problem with that, that something was blocking the, the pipe, bringing water into the pond, and pond started freezing over in December. And so, we, we went and kind of reamed the pipe out. It's, it had some kind of bacterial, you know, the, for whatever reason, the hot, his hot springs developed bacterial mats, and I think they were kind of plugging it up. But now, flow is okay. But we got a leak out one of the banks. So, there's, you can't just leave it. People go up there and, and they blow the pipes up with shotguns. They go up there and shoot frogs, and, I mean, they just, they just can't keep themselves away.
Okay.
Yes. Bottom line is, what's your recommendation to us? Do we need to have, I mean, look for someone similar to what you, you know, your, where you took care of it, that's somebody around here, but...
Well, yeah, well, you know, I think the way things developed for me is unlikely to be duplicated.
Yeah.
And I lived down in Love Lock, and Winnebago put out some ad for somebody to control the black flies. So, I put in for it, and I got, got the job, and then I just kind of gradually build it up. And, and in the meantime, you know, I was, I was, had other jobs and, and income. We, we were running a, a truck scale. We didn't have any rent. That helped.
This, this gig here wasn't enough to make a living on, to begin with, huh?
Well, I've made a living on it this year. I mean, I got dumped by Battle Mountain for reasons that were never given to me. So, I just did Winnebago and Humboldt County, and still here.
Yeah.
Haven't lost any weight because I can't buy food or anything.
But you have an investment in equipment, so...
No. No, the equipment, the part of the, part of the contract was that the county supplied the equipment. Otherwise, it would have had to charge a lot more.
Okay.
Because then I would have had to erect some kind of a shed and have various kinds of safety measures in it, and I would have had to have a truck with, with a cup, and a couple foggers and chemical storage shed and everything. If I had to do that myself, I would have had to charge a, a whole lot more. So, that was kind of the arrangement right from the beginning.
So, the fact that the county owns this stuff already, it pretty much tells us where we need to head with this.
That makes a big difference.
You know, if you, if you had a, like, a weed district along with it, then you could fill out somebody's schedule.
Yeah.
If you gave them the job of controlling Mormon crickets as well, of course, that's during the insect season, they probably, they may, but that would kind of flesh out a schedule. You know, if you started doing that kind of thing, you could probably, at least during the insect weed season, you could have a, a full-time job, and, and there'd be probably a full-time job for a couple employees, too.
So, what is, what is the city on?
Are you retiring and quitting the business altogether?
Well, I'm gonna, you know, it's, it's kind of, I, I'm not gonna just quit and, and abandon the county, but I've got some other things going. I'm enrolled in a couple different courses, and one of them, I've got to be over in California part of the time. I've got this, I've got this insect project I'm doing on fungus gnats. I started in 2017, and last year, because it was a dry year and didn't have to worry about Battle Mountain, I really expanded it a lot. And this next year, I've got plans to do, to do more.
I guess what I'm getting at is, if you're gonna be continuing to do this and taking your employees, or are your employees gonna be jobless after this year?
Well, I, I think they want to continue to, to work in the, in the field. So, they, neither of them are young. One of them's 82. The other one's well into his 70s. I know the one in his 70s is keen to work.
Right.
He doesn't want to quit. The one in his 80s, he, he's always saying, "This is my last year," and then he's, then he's back. So...
I know a few of those.
You know, I, I'm pretty sure that, that they would transfer over, because they, they like the work.
I guess what I'm getting at is if there's any interest internally from your group to continue this on, or...
I do think there's an interest.
Continue to contract with the county to, and, and having that experience with you for however many years is, to me, is a great asset that we should probably tap into. You know, whether it's a person that's in their 70s that maybe only wants to do it for a few more years at least, hopefully, they can get somebody else on and continue to pass that knowledge down, and I really hate to lose all that that we have going on, but...
Well, there, there, especially the guy that's in his 80s, he, I think he's been the most valuable employee I've ever had. He's up for anything, any job that I give him.
Right.
He's learned a lot. It's too bad he isn't, like, 20 years younger. But that's how it goes. The, the other thing, I'm sorry, the other thing that, the way I, the way I run things, I think that, that, I think people like that. It's more of a, it's not really a nine-to-five job, it's more of a task-based job. And, you know, I discuss, we've got a problem, and this needs to be done by this date, and then I just turn them loose. And they, they organize themselves and get it, get it done within that timeframe, without me bossing them around. I'm not a very bossy person. I'm more of a, of a, let's, let's try and understand everybody's situation and, and work with that, and I don't know what you would call that, whether it's a consultative sort of...
Directive.
Yeah, whatever it is, it, you know, I, I just, I'm not the kind of person that, you know, is, is like this, "You will do it now," sort of thing. I, I'm just, you know, that's not me. And I, so I think people like that, whether you're gonna get somebody else. Like, this guy who's 82, he says, you know, "Your problem is you're too soft," but that's what they, that's what they like, you know, and that's more what I am. So, you know, that's, that's an element in what's gone into this.
Well, I just, I, I just wanted to say, and I think all of us have said it at least once, well, I, I personally appreciate the elimination of the Winnebago wave. And, Robin, that did happen with your tenure, there's no doubt about that. I, you and I've talked about it before. I mean, you've been very effective at what you've done. I, I, I can't wait to talk to Landry County next time when I, now that I know that they...
When they get a regular water year, they're gonna have...
Oh, I don't doubt my mind.
And, and they've made this gigantic sewage plant.
Yeah.
You, there's no roads going through it like here. There's no way they're gonna be able to control things by the ground.
Yeah.
Every time they get a mosquito...
Well, they, they've created their own monster, and...
They have. It's gonna be a monster.
It's, it's easy to take it for granted. If you, if you're somebody who moved into this community 10 years ago, it's easy to take, take what we enjoy for granted. And any of us who lived here prior to your tenure remembers it really well. And, so at any rate, I'm thankful that you're gonna hang around long enough to at least impart your abilities and your experience, historical experience as well.
I'm not moving away.
So, well, well, I, I do appreciate it. We're gonna do, as I pointed out, we're gonna have an RFP, we're gonna actually start the process to try to, try to put somebody out there on the ground that can benefit from your background, so...
I, I will say, you know, this has been a very good job for me, too.
Yeah.
You know, I've been my, you know, my own boss, kept my own hours, you know, I've just got to do the job.
Yeah.
And it's been with insects. After all, I am an entomologist. I'm, I have a lifelong interest in insects, and I've got to, this is, you know, applied insect biology, and it's been really good for me, too. And I've wanted to do the, the best job that I could do.
Well, it was obvious.
Sure was, yeah.
You did.
It was obvious, so...
Did you buy, do you buy the insecticides, pesticides, or whatever you use, or...
No, I go, go and say, either here or down in the city office and tell them, you know, "We need some more material." I give them an estimate how much it's gonna cost, get a PO, and then I, I make the order.
Okay. Thank you.
Can you have a good storage place? We have a good storage place set up for all that.
Yeah, right.
Mr. Chair, so Dave Mindiola, just to give you a little more background. So, yes, so the county, or the equipment that Robin's team and Robin use is the county-owned equipment, maintained by the shop up there, so keep it in order. And the gas runs through a specific budget, gas needs, anything like that. Again, the larvicide, all those kind of things are budgeted for within our mosquito control program, our, our fund. And so, just to give you an idea money-wise, the last three years, so there's two sides. So, there's the Humboldt County, and then we also get funded by the city of Winnebago. In 2019, the county alone spent $206,000, I'll just round it off here. In 2020, $170,000, and 2021, $115,000. So, as we get into that drought, you can see those numbers go down. The city, city's portion of that cost-share agreement in 2019, where we spent 206, they were at 108. So, it was $315,000. That was probably a peak year, just to give you an idea. But we do have funds in those, in those budgets to, to control. So, anything new we do, we've got money to start out with. We're not starting from scratch. And so, we've got the basis to bring somebody on, a company, and do exactly what Robin's doing in terms of the structure. Or if we have to go another direction, we've got money to do that as well, depending upon what happens. So, that's a good thing. And then, of course, like I said, the, I'm also working closely with Churchill County. I've spent a good amount of time on the phone with a guy named JD McKay, who's the deputy director of their weed district, a mosquito district. He's just provided me a wealth of information on what they do, budgets, structure. So, we've got, again, we've got some information that we can apply and put into a strategic plan, that kind of thing, and he's willing to come over at any time and, and, you know, meet Robin and talk to them. Because I talked to him, and his stories are just like yours, about larvicide and mosquito fish, and so, that, that made me feel really good, because I knew that other people were doing similar stuff. Maybe not the exact thing, but they were doing similar stuff. So, I was comforted by that, and he's convinced, as I think you were, Robin, that we can find somebody to do this, you know, one way or the other. There's people out there that do this, they love this, they're committed to it, and so I'm, I'm feeling a little better about it.
Good.
Does the city do their own fogging here in town, or are you doing that?
No, we do that, too. We, we generally, we have flogged Winnebago, the whole town, on a few occasions, but like in 2020, when we had that huge outburst, we, we sprayed the whole town and the flood plain.
So, the city doesn't own any...
They, they do.
...supplying their equipment for the town?
Correct. Yeah, it's all part of the...
The city does own some stuff. I mean, it's the building.
Right.
That, there's a whole Quonset hut up there that we use. The county does have its, its own kind of shed. Basically, it's a boiler room, and, and we've got a little hut for the fish stuff. That's owned by the county. So, the city does have some things. It's got chemicals, it's got a lot of BTI that we use on the river. It's got BTI granules that we use for controlling mosquito larvae. So, they do have some materials.
Yeah, it's a definite partnership.
Okay. Anything else? Robin, thank you.
Thank you.
You hung around a long time waiting for us. Appreciate that.
Well, at least I had lunch.
Yeah, the least we could do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck to you.
Appreciate you.
It's kind of a unique situation that's gonna be kind of tough to, tough to refill, you know. She's done this as a, as a contractor, but at the same time, kind of a consultant.
Yeah.
Basically, she was paid a wage, I guess, or a salary, I would assume.
Consulting.
Consulting work. We put an RFP out for a company to come in, and I, I think you're gonna be surprised by the numbers that, that come in, because they're gonna want to completely take it all over, and by all rights, probably.
Historically, though, that's the problem.
Yeah.
Is that they don't know what to...
Well, and that's it, yeah, this very unique, very, a lot of knowledge there with, with exactly where to go treat and what to look for, and...
She's, she actually has larvicide, larval traps in the river right now.
Right. To monitor that.
She's actually tracking the, the reproduction and the, and the level of development of those larvae right now. So, she, she, she's pretty...
Hundred percent dedication, but what can we do to, to just carry on one of, one of her people to...
What months do you have in the summertime?
Zero months. Zero. My months are out.
I think I give up some of your extra...
Zero.
If you could do it on a snowmobile, you'd probably try.
I just wonder what, what do we have to do to get that?
Well, I, you know, I think the first place to start is probably with her team.
Yeah.
She's worked with.
For sure.
There's been a handful that have worked with her over the years and whatnot. She's got a lot of connections, too. A lot of people, they know each other well throughout the, the industry, it's like any other industry. So, I think it's the place to start. But I think, just my gut feeling is that rather than hiring a company that comes in with their own foggers and their own airplane contracts and all that kind of stuff, I think we're better trying, better served to try to come up with somebody who can do the consulting work side of it the way they are, because... Because I agree, yes, she's really sharp and she knows this stuff inside and out. And she developed this whole program. But now that the program's been developed and we know what species are here and we know when they reproduce and we know what conditions they reproduce under, it's a whole lot easier to put somebody in play there to maintain the program as opposed to develop it, so.
There might be someone out there. I mean, there's mosquitoes all over the West.
Yeah.
And all over the world. But I mean, there might be somebody out there that's been doing a program like this for a community that's looking for a place to move to.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, so I, Mr. Chair, Dave Mindiola, again, I, the whole idea behind the RFP is not to set it up so that it's a company responding. It's going to be very specific that we have the equipment, we have the personnel, and it's going to be more focused on finding what we're talking about here. Is somebody who has that background or love or passion to come in and fill those shoes? And it might even have a little narrative as to what we do today. And looking for somebody to take, so it's going to be very focused. And that's why it's going to be interesting whether or not, well, you know that there's third-party companies that would put down a, you know, big proposal, a bunch of big money thinking, hey.
Oh, yeah, for sure, yeah.
But that's why it's going to be very focused. That's why Alicia and I have been talking about that, how we do that, with the idea of getting that type of person to replace.
What portion of this is, I guess, wages or not product? But, you know, what's it, what's it cost us to have that person in place?
You know, I didn't have her break it out, but I suspect it's kind of like any other business. It's a majority, it's probably 70% of it, 67%.
What about, is there something that, that we could use an employee in the wintertime, but right now, but we don't need them in the summertime? I mean, if you ended up with a full-time employee, is there some place where they could be effective in the winter months doing something else for the county?
You know, the only place I see that, and you know what Don's situation is, he's always short. But if we ever got him up to full speed, you know, in the winters, of course, if there's snow, then they're busy. But if there's not snow, you know, and the weather conditions are right, that's a place where we might be able to grab somebody and pull them aside and start doing some training. So I've thrown that out to Don and, you know, and we didn't have much of a conversation. Just like he said, I think, yeah, if I ever had a full staff, I might even be able to think about that, so. But I think there's some different things we need to look at and we're just going to have to figure it out. It all starts with seeing what kind of response we get.
Yeah.
And then we can kind of figure it out from there.
I kind of agree on that thinking, too. Commissioner Tipton, it would be nice to see somebody be employed full-time, not just a half-time. But I don't know, that's why I asked about the numbers. Maybe this is a full-time wage for somebody that's willing to consult for seven months of the year. I would imagine, looking at those numbers, that if we could find the right person to take that over, it probably makes them a pretty good living just off Humboldt County.
It's really, it's eight months because you've got to back up a month into February if you're going to have somebody look at cricket problems.
And the other thing is, is that, she was pointing out, because they're maintaining a fish cultural project out on the end of town, there's some involved with that, too, to make.
Well, all year, like she said, you have to feed them every, they're feeding them every week, so.
Yeah, they're feeding them now, so.
Well, we own, well, we lease the pond, so we technically own the fish.
And that was quite a, that was quite a project to get those there. That was, they don't just, they're not native to this area.
Right.
And, you know, the only reason that Tipton, it was Tony Tipton had them in that, one of those hot ponds that he had up there at the older rancher at Pumpernickel. And he had drained that one pond out into a big field. And there was a bunch of water that was about that deep, all braided out. And there was a whole bunch of those little gambusias swimming around and I was about to die.
Oh, wow.
In the mud. And Robyn asked me if I could get permission. And that was when Tony was about, it was in the process of selling it to Roger Johnson. So Robyn and I and Roger Johnson are out there scooping those things out of the mud. And that first 5,000 he talked about, he and I were involved with that. But that's, they're hard to come by, so you don't want to lose them.
Right.
And they save just tons of money for the county because they, you put them in those backwaters. Whenever the river floods, gets out in those little backwaters.
Yeah, take them out.
He stalks them out there and about two and a half, three weeks later, there's no need for anything. And those fish just literally, anything that's wiggling in the water gets eaten, so.
Huh.
Yeah, if you need some of those.
Got to find a pot of those mosquitoes.
You need some that eat crickets.
They're so, they reproduce like you might gather. I mean, they literally hundreds of thousands a year.
So what do you need on this, an action to put out an RFP or is this just more of a?
No, I don't think we need an action at all. Just wanted to give you a heads up of what we're doing, what we're trying to figure out. And hopefully Alicia and I'll come back here in a month or so and give you an update and it'll be good news.
Okay, well, with that, we'll go to public comment again. The public comment. Not hearing any additional public comment, we adjourn, I'm going to adjourn this meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Commissioners.